Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Sorry about that. Key 79, are we about ready? Is he on the record?
We are on the record.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Again, it is 8:46. We're going to continue this meeting after the executive session with a public hearing, continuation of public hearing regarding special permanent application number 304, Jeffrey Overman, 676 Hollow Tree Ridge Road. Jeremy, you want to get us?
Sure. We can give you an update. This hearing was continued from last week. What is being distributed to you right now are two 11-by-17 sheets. One showing the proposed change in location of the chiller unit. You may recall from the last meeting. We're putting the chillers in the backyard. Now it's closer to the house. And on the other 11-by-17 sheets are more details on the proposed ice rink, as well as comments which we emailed to the commission earlier today from Assistant Public Works Director Darren Ostifan on drainage. And a cover letter dated February 4th from Steve Mitchell of Pumpkin Ridge talking about the drainage and the grading. They're basically creating a level area for the ice rink, which will help retain water. He goes through in detail the relocation of some of the Coltech units and points out that the units, the rink will be 37 feet at its closest point to the property line. Fred, do you have anything to add?
We, since the last public hearing, we had asked the applicant to add some additional details to the plans based on the commission's concerns. So they went ahead and added the as-built elevations based on the site work that was done at the property. It's also been brought to our attention by the applicant that based on conversations with the neighbor directly adjoining to the west, that the chiller units were moved directly adjacent to the residence to reduce any potential visual impact or impacts that might occur as a result of noise from the units. So they've provided these amended plans. As Jeremy mentioned, Darren Ostifan, the assistant town engineer, took a look at them and basically came to the conclusion that with the site work that has been completed to prepare the site for the installation of the rink, and with the installation of the rink, it's not likely to result in any additional stormwater impacts to adjacent neighbors.
Okay. So we checked the boxes on the engineering report, the neighbors. The chiller's location has since changed since our last meeting. Was there any other follow-ups from our perspective?
I don't think so. The applicant's here. Do you have any questions? No.
Anything else? Anybody?
You know what? The item that presses an as-built survey at the local...
The first time.
What's that?
The first time it's done.
Remember, it's in and out.
Yeah, the first time.
So would be potentially later this month or early next month? Or if they decide not to do it this year?
Yeah.
When the rink is in there?
Yes. Anything else?
I don't need anything else. Does anybody else need anything else? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. You got to ask the public. My, anybody from the public like to address this? Seem none? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second. All clear.
We have an opportunity to deliberate this in a bit, this evening?
Maybe this evening.
Or, you know, just watch it on TV a few more. I highly recommend you do that. Thanks for the follow-up, gentlemen.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate it. All right. So Kevin, you want to take a second one?
Number three, item number two on the public hearing, special permit application number 305, site plan 168 West Avenue, LLC 168 West Avenue. Proposal was to purchase two new two-bedroom apartments in the first-floor space formerly occupied by Town Electric and formulated site plan activities. Specific properties situated on the north side of West Avenue at the southwestern corner formed by its intersection with Edgewood Road and is shown in the successor map 20 as lot number 15 in SB zone.
Sure. So this is, as you'll recall, the commission saw this application prior, a different application for the installation of Heights Pizza in this location. Since that time, the applicant had withdrawn that application based on the commission's discussion. They have returned to the commission with now a proposal to install two-two-bedroom apartments on the first floor of the building, the existing building on the site. There are very minor site plan changes in terms of the location of the dumpster and possible minor relocation of each back units on the site. But the site will remain very much as it does today. The applicant here, Joe and Aldo, are here to summarize the proposal for the commission.
So, and just to be clear, it's the zone it sits in, it would need a special permit?
Service business zone. These dwelling units on the first or first and second floors are allowed by special permit under section 664G of the regulations on the service business zone.
Good evening. My name is Aldo Criscuolo. This is Joe Criscuolo. We're both partners.
Could you spell your last name, please?
It's C-R-I-S-C-U-O-L-O.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So a little background. Joe and I bought the property in the end of 2017 with the idea of relocating my business in town, Heights Pizza. We put an application in front of the commission. Didn't go well. So we're reapplying to put two apartments in on the property.
And if they, just let me stop you there. It was ultimately withdrawn, right?
Ultimately withdrawn by the county.
Okay, thank you.
Withdrawn. So we do, we need to do something with the property. So I just, Joe's going to go into some detail about the units. I just want to say, you know, we, I've had a business in town for 28 years. And I don't think there was any surprises in terms of what kind of business it is. Everybody knows Heights Pizza. And I did not come in front of you the last time, but I do want to voice some disappointment in the last part of it. I didn't feel like I was treated fairly. Just because, you know, I didn't get a chance to voice myself, to explain to you what, you know, my feelings.
You had the oppo, let me, let me be clear because I don't want any confusion about the record. You had the opportunity to come forward.
Yes, I did.
You chose not to at that point.
I chose not to.
You withdrew the application.
That might have been more the attorney.
So just, let's focus on this.
I had some, I had some advice that maybe I didn't need to do that, but...
As you see, we don't have an attorney to say that.
Understood. So anyway, let's, just focus on this.
Yes, we'll focus, we'll keep it real, real simple. So we want to put two apartments in on the property. Two-two-bedroom apartments. Nothing, we're not building the Taj Mahal. So Joe can, can tell you about some of the...
And if you could just talk about what exists at the building now?
Yes, so we have, the bottom floor was where the electrician was, Town Electric was. Upstairs, we have two apartments, two one-bedroom apartments. One of the tenants has been there for over 15 years. And we have a new tenant in the apartment facing the street.
Okay. And it's basically adding two apartments that would make it four apartments?
Total of four apartments.
Perfect.
Correct.
And as you discussed, as we just talked about the parking around there.
Right.
How many spaces do we have?
We have 16 spaces.
I'm not trying to derail you guys. I'm trying to like tell you what to cover.
So...
I have some boards here showing basically minimal changes with just windows.
Oh, you need to stand by the microphone, please?
Bonnie's going to yell.
Let me introduce myself. I'm sorry. My name is Joseph Criscuolo, Aldo's brother, his business partner. So basically, these are the boards showing, I don't know if I gave those plans. Did I? Okay, great. So yeah, we're doing minimal changes. On this end, I don't think we're, this, we're not making any changes to the windows. They're staying exactly the same. That's the second floor. What we are doing is adding another entrance for one of the apartments. So we're keeping the existing entrance and adding another entrance for the new apartment. The new apartment is going to be on the first floor, obviously, because that's where Town Electric was. This, this door here will, is still existing and it's going to lead to the second floor. That's the door that will lead to the first floor. So I'm going to make that storyboard. These windows are exactly the same. There are no windows on this side. That's the, I don't know if that's the...
North facing?
Yeah, the north facing.
Thank you.
North facing. Okay. This, this will have windows for the bedrooms because by code, you have to have a window in a bedroom. So we have two new windows.
Do you have to point, just point them out?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The two middle ones?
Right. Those two middle ones, right.
The other two are existing?
Well, we do have windows there, but we, we divided them because one of the walls would have fell right in the middle of one of the windows. So we placed it the proper distance where, you know, obviously makes sense for an apartment. That's that one. This is the end that's on the, I guess, the south side, right? Where two new windows on that corner.
That would be, when you say south, it's going to be more west, or face?
Okay, thank you.
I think so.
Right.
Facing towards Stanford.
Right, exactly. Yeah, we are adding two windows there. So we're going to cut the concrete and add these two windows because obviously the bedrooms, you have to have a, you know, complete...
There's a fire, you have to stay...
Okay, this is the layout for the apartments. We were able to put, they're not the biggest apartments, but they're, thank you. They're to code. The bedrooms are like 10 by 12. All the bedrooms are to code. And, you know, they're not huge. They're about 700 square feet each. The whole floor is about 1,600 square feet. And I think you both, you all have this layout.
Right. And the last and probably the most important elevation is the one that's going to be to the north, which faces the parking lot. Oh, yeah, you're into that.
You heard that, yeah.
That's the one with the two doors that go upstairs into the second building.
Right.
So we're just adding a door. Yep.
Yeah.
Joe, on that, on the board that you have in your hand.
Right.
Point to West Avenue.
Okay, I will. Hold on. West Avenue is...
That is Hollow Tree.
Right here. Right here. Yeah, where the entrances are, two new entrances, one new entrance.
Thank you.
And, and just for the record, the reason why apartments, you've tried to rent this for businesses?
You know what? With the zone, I think, we also have properties in other towns and the zone is really difficult to get anything. We were trying to get a framing store and that didn't even meet the code requirements. So we just, you know, our tenant, which is, what's the name of the tenant? The potential tenant?
It's the framing store in Heights Shops. So we've, we've tried.
Yeah, and we couldn't even get him in there because it really didn't meet the zone.
Yeah, and it's a parking issue, I think.
No, no, it wasn't a parking issue. He's retail, so there's like a...
This zone requires external storage or activity.
Right.
So we were debating.
Right.
We said, well, the framing store doesn't have external storage or activity and...
And he has nowhere to go and we had to turn him down.
And then you're putting that activity in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Which is taking up parking spaces. So I think they said, look through. We spent a lot of time looking through all the listed permitted uses in the zone, both as of right and by special permit. And they said, wow, it's too small to put a hotel. It would be difficult to put a veterinary office here. So they said, probably...
And we couldn't put auto. We were trying with the BMW dealer and it was too small. You know, they need somewhere to go, but he couldn't make it work in space.
By the way, the zone is just a weird zone. I mean, it's zoned. We could put a used car lot. And I can't, I can't imagine the neighbors preferring a used car lot in Heights Pizza.
Understood, understood. I guess. I think apartments are graded.
Okay.
All right. So any other questions, guys, ladies? Anybody from the public like to speak on this?
So my name's Karen, Karen Doying, D-O-Y-I-N-G, Ten Hundred Road. So here's the plan that has for the outside with the parking and stuff. It talked about the outside changes or what they're going to do to the outside, but there's no detail on here what's going to actually happen with landscaping and all that kind of stuff.
I'm sorry, you referenced something?
The plans that just show the parking.
Yes.
My understanding is the only change that they are proposing to the outside is to put a dumpster with screening in the parking lot, which is the last space closest to the corner of West and East, right there.
Okay. And so are there setbacks for that from the road or?
No.
And then this has fewer spaces than the other, when it came before you before? Was there a change for that or?
Well, residential has a different parking requirement than a restaurant.
Yeah, so what is required?
So for residential?
I think we might need that. Sorry, hold on one second. Thank you.
For multifamily, the requirement is two, under section 904B, two and a half spaces per dwelling unit.
Right. Okay.
So they would need 10 spaces and they have 15.
Okay. And where's the property line on here? He's got this dash line here?
On this survey, this survey here, the thick flat dash, dot, dash, here.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, and then the thick line here. But let me show you.
Yeah, this is, this is what was in the file.
This is easier to read. The zone line is between the R1/3rd and the SB zone.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is this line.
Oh, so this is zone, okay. Okay, okay. And then the only thing that, the other thing that I was, wanted some clarification on is right here where this lamp post is, I know it's hard to do this, up here in this top right-hand corner. This is where the stairs come down from Edgewood Road. You know where that is? And that is supposed to be reserved for emergency vehicles. That parking space that, that is there, and that was required when those stairs were put in years ago, is that that was reserved for emergency parking to come in here through Edgewood or on this way for the fire engines to fit and should not be used for anything else.
I don't think the stairs are parked.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, the stairs aren't.
But that...
Please, no, you have to address everything to me.
Yeah, so no, it's the paved part there in front of the stairs when you come down the stairs.
That's, yeah, that's not shown as parking space.
No, but it's, no, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be left blank for emergency vehicles. We were told that.
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Where's the dumpster going, Jeremy? Dumpster's going to be at the same, yeah?
All right. And that's, meets all setbacks. We got all the parking requirements.
Joe, the last question. You can leave one more HVAC unit, C unit? Or you can be okay working with what you have?
Oh, I think there is already for the existing office. They had two compressors on the outside. So we would just probably put two air handlers in the apartments with the same location for the HVAC units.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so we would just keep the same footprint.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No? Can I get a motion for those this here? All in favor? Thank you. All right. Deliberations maybe later, but as I said, the last applicant.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Gents, guys, you can go outside. Thanks. All right. I never want to get the pizza guy. The amount of money we spent at that place. Just joking. Of course. Kevin, can you carry some before I get myself into trouble?
Sorry, I'm going to just read the full piece, right? So general meeting, item number four, an urgent deliberation, possible decision required. Followed amendment, a site plan application number 301, special permit application number 301, and landfilling and regrading application number 433, town carian 560 Middlesex Road, Island Farm. We will modify and clarify and amend the commission's July 24, 2018 approval as follows. Condition D on page eight, allowing the Parks and Recreation Department to have more than one portable bathroom. It is determined that more than one is needed for an event. Condition P on pages nine and 10, eliminate the requirement for parking areas to be paved for programmed activities occurring. Condition Q on page 10, eliminate the requirement for a toilet on the site at this time. This should be considered condition D.
I'm going to stop you there. We don't have to go through the rigging. Sorry, my bad.
You were doing great though.
Yeah, no. Okay. So what do you got? Mine?
Yeah.
Okay. You can hear through the door. It's amazing. It comes with the... I'm seeing nothing. You talk with our hands. I'm trying to get it. Anyway.
So John here, three modifications to what Fred and I put together. The first one is on page six, condition D about the bathrooms. And you may recall, the question was about when should it be placed? When should the port be placed and should the commission allow more than one? So John and Fred, just work to read this aloud and I'll read the other.
Hey, it's fine.
No, it's a little distracting. I'm sorry. Do we want to hold on or you want to... No, go ahead. You go, go ahead, please.
So condition D reads, the proposed portable bathroom shall be placed on-site on an as-needed basis. This section was added by John, "At the sole discretion of the Parks and Recreation Department, based upon programming needs. A portable bathroom or bathrooms shall be on-site for all special events."
So the, I guess the bottom line was, they got to have a bathroom when they have programmed activities. We're not going, they can choose how many they need for special events. Is that okay?
What, what got changed between last week and this week?
Uh, their discretion.
At the sole discretion.
Like the sole discretion could be zero. That's what I was just trying to find.
Based on programming needs.
Nothing changed. It's the same shit.
Refresh by memory, if you will, the portable, there's a provision for bathroom there in the rules. Is there always going to be a portable bathroom? Or isn't the plan at some point to build a little something for the couple for us? Is that still the long-term plan? So this is only temporary?
No, because they still might have portable bathrooms for larger events.
But I mean, the long-term plan is they'll build some...
The site plan has a bathroom on it.
Portable house.
Yeah. So if they want to amend the site plan and come back, they'll have to address that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay.
The second change was page seven, condition P relative to, you may recall Pam talked about, can we use one of the parking areas? And what John added here was a requirement to put in gravel.
To stabilize the...
To stabilize. And I think to clarify that, it's not only putting gravel over the existing gravel area, but that whole grassy area which has been fenced.
And the problem is they, they put a temporary lot in. It's a mud pit, other than the...
It's half-mud, it's half-cravel.
It's not even, there's like a strip of, not even old pavement. And you can tell people have already had either fun or trouble. We'll, we'll put it either or in that, in that area. So in order for them to use this temporary lot, they got to, you know, basically I said stabilize.
Stabilize with gravel.
And we have plenty of public works, people that figure that one out.
The last change is on page nine. Condition at the top, which is a special permit, how we define a special permit. And it was, and John didn't, nice job clarifying 92 vehicles, except for the horse show.
Wait, 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 no.
No? Isn't that the one you talked about? Or is it the bottom? I thought you did definition of a special event.
Hold on.
Whatever document we're looking at does not, nothing changed on the first one you talked about. And then I don't have the changes about stabilized on the second one.
Are you looking at the right one?
A special event should be defined, that one, more than 92 vehicles?
Yeah, so then...
A special event is on condition P.
Yeah, so mine didn't come through there.
A special event shall be defined as a planned gathering. Now, this is the new section starting here, where more than 92 vehicles will be parked, except for the Ox Ridge Horse Show, no more than 240 vehicles shall be parked on-site at any one time.
Special events are one.
It is different. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's the right one.
This is the area within 120 feet of Middlesex Road, shown as area available for overflow parking on sheet SE-1 of the approved plan.
So the, what the applicant came back to amend was over, I forgot. It was like counting vehicles. And so essentially what we discussed as a group is, listen, they have to put in a list. We know what a special event is. And if something's, you know, greater than typical use, that's going to trip, immediately trip the criteria to be a special event without having to count all the vehicles coming in.
So the new, the new language added to the resolution by John reads, "A special event shall be defined," now this is added by John, "as a planned town and/or nonprofit-sponsored gathering that is not a programmed activity."
So you got programmed activity, you got everything else which kind of falls into the special items.
Do you think that makes sense?
So that's a new sense. It's not...
Correct.
Oh.
There were such minor modifications to the resolution that we didn't distribute those.
Understood, but the first two you had, you already had on here. So you're saying John added, it was added two weeks ago. It's in this one. Anyway, that's about it.
Okay.
That's it. So it was the original red line, John's changes that we just discussed.
So now what are we doing with number 15 at the bottom? This is where John, like five, touching some of the students here.
On the version you have, which is, is that where it's at the bottom of page nine?
Correct.
So, amusement attractions or rides shall be prohibited within 300 feet of the shared property line with the Ox Ridge Hot Club. Or we could say riding racket club, either one. However, up to five amusement attractions or rides may only be placed once a year for up to two days on a weekend. One day may be used for setup. All rides shall be shut off by Sunday.
That, that is what we discussed and what they transcribed. Now, if you guys want to take the five out, let me know. But we, I said, guys, give me a number and then number five is...
I don't really care if it's five or seven or eight.
I don't care if it's five or seven or eight.
You can take it out. We're going to, right, is when we're going to come? I mean, maybe they'll want to do something.
All right. Again, I'm just...
Well, they'll have to come. Well, they have to show what they're...
No, it, it, they'll have to show, but it's already approved. If you take out a number, then you could have a heavenly happening. There's no... Remember, we said no amusements in the original resolution.
The original was no, I think at the hearing, if I recall, they said five would be fine.
But it's like if they're doing amusements, I was worried about the horse. If they don't, if they tell me the horse, they're fine, that's not...
All right, I'm, I'm no more than five, but so, let's, let's go. Five.
I don't, you can take out five.
I don't care. He can have his main.
It just seems rather arbitrary, but I don't...
What, do you? All right. I need a number. Five or no limit?
Again, whatever. Five.
That's three.
Five.
All right. Two, five, six. They can always come back.
We'll have our own views.
Okay, so this is the resolution? Just need a vote.
Can I get a motion to approve as amended?
I move to approve as amended.
And I'll second.
All in favor? Brilliant.
Kevin?
Thank you. Okay. Amendments to the amendment. Okay. Go ahead, Kevin.
Amendment to physical site plan number 2378 Dulcey 22 for Road Street, CBD zone, request for two new tenants.
You have the letter from Phil Dulcey, which is very straightforward. It's a low-intensity use, which meets the requirements for the CBD zone. And other tenants have moved out, basically. So we would recommend approval. The issue here is the limited parking. But it sounds like based on the nature of the reasons, it should be fine.
And you got Road Street for over four, right? And you got Grove Street for over four, right?
Correct.
I hear very good things on handwork school. Yeah, and I know her from working with my daughter, who moves it called.
Got it, can I get a motion to approve?
Second?
Second? All in favor? Thank you.
Amendment number six, business site plan number one eighty-seven, RFA Capital Corp., nineteen twenty-one Boston Post Road. The zone requests option mortgage office, commercial sales and service, financial services use on the first floor of an existing building, for storage on the second floor.
The memo from Dave Keating is dated January thirty-first. And what's interesting about this is, the neighborhood business zone is always allowed retail uses, commercial sales and service, as approved by the commission. The nature of the zone is, the commission has to approve all such uses. But when the commission changed the zoning regulations a few years ago to say financial service uses, such as banks, are retail, that then triggered the fact that a mortgage office, mortgage broker's office, such as this, would then be allowed in the neighborhood business zone. So, Dave said, well, in the old days, it was not allowed, but with that change in the regulations, it would now be allowed in that zone, seems like a very good fit, very low intensity, very quiet, doesn't need a lot of space, not a lot of parking requirements. So, the commission still has to approve it. I think there'll be a separate question later on, when we talk about zoning changes, and what uses are allowed in which zones, but for the time being, it's a permitted use as a right with the commission's review in the neighborhood business zone at nineteen twenty-one Post Road.
Well, well described, I have no issue with it. Anybody else have any comments?
No comments.
All right, can I get a motion to approve this?
Version two approved as submitted.
Second?
All in favor? Awesome, six zero.
Great.
Special permit application number sixty dash ten, flood damage prevention application number two oh eight B, landfilling regre- regreating application number one twenty-one C, Central Bojerrian, three-thirds Mansfield Avenue. Request for extension of time to expand the surface area of an existing pond and other related, site-related activities.
No, and uh.
Correct. I know.
Just stay there, don't vote on anything.
Yeah.
Uh, we looked at this as a great flood mitigation project, any reason why they need another year?
You're the only one.
They are, um.
No reason's okay too, they just need another year.
I believe it's project funding, that they've, they've been having some issues with project funding. It's, they're, they've indicated that they plan on beginning work in September.
Okay.
Of two thousand nineteen, so it's not likely they'll need that full year, but just.
Let's give them a year, yep. All right, uh, can I get a motion to approve a year extension on this? Ms. Reva? Second is Steve, 'cause you motioned it, that's fine, all in favor?
Five to zero.
All right, discussion of proposed changes to business site. Business zone-related zoning.
Stop there, and then we'll have staff kind of walk us through each one.
Sure. Glenn couldn't be here tonight, but we spoke, Glenn and I spoke with Glenn on the phone. Really, this is our opportunity to kind of walk through everything one last time, make some final decisions, with the, as you can see at the bottom, with the expectation that if things go well tonight, we could schedule a public hearing for March nineteenth on all of these items. We're gonna likely break it down into three or four separate requests. But we wanted to talk about a few things tonight, very methodically. So we're sending you, the blue form is, if you will, a little guidance for us. But we'll start first, I guess we can start with the agenda, the concept of the zoning map amendments. The merging of the three office zones into one office zone, the DB one and DB two merging, and the service business and service business east zones. There's been, Glenn pointed out, in some cases, it's pretty difficult. But I think the booklet he provided, I have extra copies for you, bring your booklet. I didn't hear a lot of issues or concerns about those merging of those zones.
No.
Merging of the residential zones?
No.
Nope, commercial zones, the office zones, service business, service business east, and DB one and DB two. The next step is to talk about where, it says on the agenda, other map amendments to certain parcels. That's this packet, it was put in your packets.
Yeah, close-ups.
Close-ups. They didn't turn out great, but I'll walk you through one by one, just.
For the rest.
These are the material changes for each of those zones.
There are some small parcels, that when you look at Glenn's maps in the booklet, are.
Tiny, you can't even.
You can't see them. So, I wanted to do an enlargement of each one. The first one looks like this. It is the property on the south side of West Avenue, right near the walkway from West Avenue down into Palmer's. That stairway. Which is right here. This is two houses away, there's a house right next door to People's Bank. That house is zoned commercial.
Oh, so we're gonna turn it into residential?
Turn it, it's been residential for a long, long, long time.
Okay.
And.
The blue with the yellow on the blue.
The yellows, the yellow box, that's a good point, Steve.
This is to the west of Edgerton Street.
Behind.
Right, the west of People's Bank.
Got it.
This property is really two lots. A few years ago, the ZBA found that it's really one lot, so it looks like two. So this area, in yellow, would be rezoned from design commercial to R one fifth.
What about this, it would go all the way up, right, it's not half of West Avenue.
Yes, it's just, the reason for that is, the zone line is the middle of the street.
Right, so the street is up.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Okay, next.
The second one.
And that was two seventy-three West Avenue, I'll read the address, just so we're on the record.
Yeah.
Nineteen seventy-three Boston Post Road.
This is a part of a parcel. This corner lot is the Puritan and Mama Carmella's. You're all familiar with that dirt parking lot in the back?
Yep.
Well, that, that area, that back of the parking lot is residentially zoned, it has been for many, many years. So this would bring the, the zone line from a hundred feet back to match the existing lot line.
You lost me in that one.
Right there.
Wait, is the line coming in or going out?
Out.
Expanding the commercial zone by ten fifteen. There'd be no material impact.
Right.
It says a hundred, that's the parking lot, right?
Yep, and then, this will push it to the property line, which is basically parking lot.
Six Rings En Route.
Six Rings En Route is a small property that a house would just redone. It's a, it's just tucked right in, it's very small property, I think it's like, the whole property's like a thousand.
Oh, yeah, we approved that, right?
No, that was an issue that came up during the town plan, where the neighbors sent a letter and said, "Please rezone this property to residential the next time we get a chance."
Oh, okay.
That's behind the Christmas lights reading.
Yeah, uh-huh.
So, you can see.
And it would just renovate, right, it looks really nice?
It does look great. So that would be changing it from commercial to residential.
Yeah. One sixty-four, Old Kings Highway South.
Corner cross street and Old Kings Highway South. It's the property that Lornmeyer came to us, oh, a couple of years ago, to put a commercial use there. The neighbors were quite outraged, it's a small parcel.
Is that they wanted to do a lawn maintenance?
Correct. And so it became apparent that that property's probably too small for legitimate commercial use in the service business zone. You made, you heard Aldo say, service business is kind of a tough, you need a lot of space for a lumberyard or garden shop. And so, we believe that because that property in front just turned into a doctor's office, that it's not likely this can be globbed onto that. And it's been a house for a hundred years, people just bought it for a house, it makes sense to rezone it.
All right, I mean, this is a little odd, because it does stick out across the way, but.
Yes.
Okay, it can always be switched back if it.
And it looks like there's no houses, if you're looking at this map, there's no houses to the north or the south of it.
Well, we had those two, I'll call it, someone would say blighted houses further down behind the gas station.
Yeah, on that side, yeah.
North?
To the north, toward the.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you're right, but if you drive up and down Old Kings Highway South, it makes sense.
Correct.
All right, six seventy-one Post, Boston Post Road.
This is one that Fred and I looked at.
What, you care about that one?
Well, this is one we looked at, Glenn's map, and it was a little unclear to us whether Glenn had included this.
I'm still on one sixty-four.
One sixty-four?
Yeah.
One sixty-four is zoned service business.
Yeah. There's a house there.
There's been a house there for as long as zoning's been effective.
No, I understand that, you're just.
The question would be.
You jump in the zoning line.
Yeah, it is tricky.
It doesn't make any sense. You jump in the, you jump in the street.
That's true.
On one side of the street, it's residential, the other side of the street is commercial, you're making, you jump in the street.
But none of the commercial on the other side of the street accesses their commercial property from Old Kings Highway South. They all access from Post Road because this already has a building in front of it.
Comes down.
The business would have to go up this residential road and access the commercial space from a very residential road.
But if, if, if you combine the front piece with the back piece.
Correct, if you sold the property to the doctor's office.
Like what happened to.
Right.
I grabbed a shake shack, and it makes sense.
So, so you don't like it?
No.
I don't mind.
I'm fine with it, do you?
I'm okay, fine.
I'm okay with it, and I think that in the future, if, if it was wanting to be changed.
I get it, that's why I called it out.
I think it'll be reviewed.
I'm not.
And again, we'll have the hearing, you know, people come out and say, "Please don't change it." That's why we have to.
Tell you a story about that house, buddy.
So, you make two points, Steve, and that's, we'll have to.
We're trying to keep zoning on same-sized street.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't hear you, but.
Now I'm torn, but, there's still four too. Six seventy-one Boston Post Road.
Six seventy-one, I think, I don't think Glenn showed this. This is the back of the, I'll call it the David Hawes real estate office. That area, the, the zone line is a set distance off Boston Post Road. So you can see, that's a straight line here. That cuts that a little bit off the back of that property. The back of that property is in the flood zone, there's wetlands on the adjacent residential properties to the north. I am worried that if this gets put forth, there could be some concern from the neighbors. And it wasn't shown on Glenn's, I think this is a mistake that I didn't. Fred and I just looked at Glenn's map earlier, we didn't see anything.
Jeremy, I'm confused, where's the, where are the roads?
There you have it.
Here's, here's twenty-five Brookside, right here. This is the house in twenty-five Brookside, twenty-nine Brookside, David Hawes.
Halsted.
Halsted Real Estate is right here.
Or Halsted Real Estate, yeah.
The Goodwise River is right here.
Okay, okay.
You guys got your bearings?
This is twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So this is, this is the parking lot of Halsted right now?
Yes.
This is what?
Woods.
And it's commercial or residential?
Residential zone, so they can't use it for their commercial parking.
It's a split lot.
It's a split lot.
So he's just trying to.
So the question becomes.
The question is, does the commission want to make it a contiguous lot in the DB one slash DBR zone?
Wait, so you're getting the back to DB one?
It's not, it's never been.
It's never been, it's always been like this.
So the yellow's going.
Right, so do you want to leave it as is, with this wooded area?
The goal has been to have the zones follow the property line, so we don't have to split.
The two kids, the golf shop.
I don't know, it's weird to me, too. But if it becomes, if it becomes commercial, and then the property trades, right, Steve, it could be torn down, and then all the new setbacks, it would be a much bigger building, it would be.
But it would have to sit by the setbacks and the buffer zones and all that stuff.
But there would, potentially, it would be given them an opportunity to maybe expand the parking, or something like that.
I don't think.
We, we did this at Friendly's, we did it at the golf shop, which is now.
Patriot Bank.
Patriot Bank, and we also did it at nineteen fifty for John Picaro twice.
You took a residential zone and made it commercial.
Yeah, we were trying to just follow the property lines.
In most instances, the zoning lines do follow the property lines, we're just trying to make things more consistent here by.
Which we just did at Mama Carmella's thirty-second.
So if we did nothing, it just means we're not adding the yellow to the residential, I don't think we should do anything.
All right, that's your, Jim?
I'm fine, we can play with it.
I'd like to change it.
I'd like to change it.
Fine, let me.
All right, it's three three where I can change it.
I'm believing it the same, yeah.
Skip the one on Pine Brook, and let's go to fifty-five Boston Post Road. Fifty-five Boston Post Road is TD Bank. You can see that this one came up clear, there's TD Bank right there. This is their boundary line, here in yellow.
Yeah, I mean.
Now, one issue here, which is kind of interesting, that area in yellow now has conservation easement. So they can't do anything to it anyways, no matter what it's on. So, it would be up to the commission, changing the zoning won't make a difference, if they can't use it.
Okay, I'd like to change it.
I'd like to change it.
Change it.
Okay.
Okay, to change.
Change.
And it looks like what's forty-three behind it?
Forty-three is the parking lot for the, I'll call it Price Line Building.
Oh, that's in.
It's wooded, it's pretty wooded.
But that's our, that's town land, I didn't realize, I didn't realize.
It's in Darien.
On, on West Norwalk Road.
West Norwalk Road.
But you can't access it from.
Is that Chipotle?
No, Chipotle's in the.
Chipotle's right here.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
A ledge road area.
Ledge Road area, this is kind of an interesting one. If you look, uh, this is, this building here is Atria.
Okay.
Atria's property goes all the way to the end here, and there is also a conservation easement in this area. The area in yellow is just DOT right-of-way. For I ninety-five. So the question is, does the commission want to rezone that yellow area of I ninety-five right-of-way? It won't change anything. It would make the zone map look nicer, but it would have no practical effect on anything.
Where is, where is Atria again?
Right here. And they own that.
There's nothing, it's wooded, it's conservation?
Uh, this is I ninety-five right-of-way. It's Traffic Island, uh, the area going right up to.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. I got it, that's why, it, it jumps the road.
Yeah, when they buy, I don't know why the zoning ended up this way, but when the state DOT buys block property in the fifties and forties.
So you want to go from SB to R one fifth, so this would make it SB to a residential, which, again, that's good, do it.
That's a good way to go, yeah, got it.
Darien Library is the next one. Glenn has talked about, that's municipal use zone, it's now split zone. I don't think it makes a huge difference what we put it to.
But let's make the lot contiguous.
We'll just make it one.
Yeah, whatever we go to.
Wherever we go to.
Probably gonna go to Pennmu.
So the front.
The front and back will be, the front now is, I guess, service business, and the back is.
That's the police station?
Police station, correct. The last one's kind of an interesting one, which we're kind of torn on. It's this parcel right here.
This is five Five Mile River.
The gas station, that, that has been a gas station, in my research, since at least nineteen thirty-seven.
Which gas station?
Corner of Five Mile River Road and Tokine Crow.
Gas station that backs up to the river.
Yeah. It's over the river.
That's the Citgo, not the one that's by fitness.
Correct.
Crossway Bridge down.
Correct, so that's been a gas station.
But technically, it's a residential zone?
So the question is, for the commission, if that gas station were to go away in the future, would the commission want to see that remain a commercial property or a residential property? Probably in the flood zone, it's right on the water. Right now, it has two curb cuts, one on Tokine Crow, one on Five Mile River. It's kind of an interesting one, because that used to have been there a long, long, long time, but in your long-range planning.
I like, I mean, again, I think it solidifies the neighborhood business zone, so I would like to see that going, yeah.
It's a neat little business zone.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would make four corners.
Yeah.
No, no, the other way, I think it should stay residential.
But you can put, Jim?
You can put Graff Florito residential.
I'm thinking of the area, and the people that live in dog down there in Tokine Crow, and I think this. This is a business research, not a business resource. If you make it, if the gas station goes and you build a house there, you lose that resource.
Okay, so we got, we got most of us envy, okay.
Envy.
Okay, next, uh, we'll start moving down the list on the agenda. One of the.
The fifth one, didn't we?
Did we?
Yeah, you told us.
Pine Brook, I, I'm still trying to figure out those two. Restaurant and food service uses, let's call it the issue related to Sono Bakery and Roost. Where right now we have a, a scheme where convenience food service limits the number of seats. Glenn, in his booklet, has talked about changing that framework for food service uses and clarifying things like re, what he calls retail food. The butcher, who sells a cup of coffee? And the cheese shop could then sell a cup of coffee or a loaf of bread, you can sit and eat there. So we've kind of changed with the times a little bit to account for that. We've also clarified in these new regulations that office buildings are very specifically a what, for this building, can have a cafeteria. So I think everyone seems satisfied with the regulatory framework, except one issue, which is related to outdoor dining. Right now, the regs allow, and Liz, you pointed this out last time, sixteen outdoor seats without evoking the parking requirement. So if you come to the commission and ask for sixteen seats, the commission can't really deny it based on parking, they could deny it on other reasons like you don't have enough room for sixteen seats. Or it would be impeding the sidewalk or whatever, but there's no parking requirement. And I think that was the sense of the commission, just wanted to double check that.
Yep.
Uh, because originally that was not Glenn's idea, but I think the commission said, we like the existing standard, sixteen seats without parking requirement.
If they want more, then they can come and ask, but they would have to show that they have parking.
Or you, you might get certain uses that just don't have room, like a good curbing company, don't have room for sixteen seats.
Yep.
Are, are we upping the seats allowed in Roost inside?
Yes, yes, because there is, by the definition, the new definition of quick-service restaurant, which is new definition, is. Does not include a limit on seats or tables or chairs. So Roost and Sono Bakery would now be considered quick-service restaurants with no limit on seating or tables.
As long as they can meet the parking requirement.
And fire safety and all that good stuff.
Have you talked to them?
Obviously, yeah.
Now, for example, Roost can go sixteen, Roost has got eight seats inside now, right? They can have sixteen inside and sixteen outside.
Uh, I don't know if they have room for sixteen, they'd have to show that they have.
There's a patio at the front.
There's a second sidewalk, but, yeah, they'd have to show that they have sixteen.
They can put something at the front.
Yeah.
And what, I, I missed the discussion about the parking that you told, but you are triggering parking or not triggering?
Right. No, what Glenn had put in is a provision in this booklet, which talks about a stricter limit on outdoor dining. He's set up a new standard, which is.
What page?
Uh, on page fifty-five of your booklet. Originally, we said, uh, seventeen seats are over, will require one space for each two seats. No space will require for the first sixteen, that's the current provision. Glenn set, suggested one space for every two seats outside.
No, we rejected that.
And the commission said no.
So go, but, but go back to, I think, what Steve was asking, Roost now, do they have to show that they have enough parking for their unlimited seating that has to? Inside, inside.
It's an interesting question, because the definition has changed. I would say no, um, what's it, the quick-service restaurant, so Glenn has proposed a new parking standard, which is one space for each one fifty of Rose Flure area.
Okay.
Which is, I think it's the same as now, so they would not need to come back to it. Now, one interesting thing that Glenn talked about in section. In the various sections is, on these restaurant seating things, are they as a right? So for example, if you look at what he's done here and say, as a right, retail food establishment. You can have a butcher, or a cheese shop, or a fish shop that also sells certain foods. As a right, you don't need a special permit. The current standard is, you, you would need a special permit, so the commission could look at things like seating, tables, making sure there's nothing. This changes that dynamic a little bit. Want to run that by the commission. Quick-service restaurant would still be special permit, but the retail food establishment, your butcher, fish market, or cheese shop, that also sells some food as a right.
That's secondary, selling the food is secondary, where QSR is a primary.
QSR is Chipotle, Starbucks.
Right, and so they will have to show that they can meet parking requirements based on their square footage, correct?
Yes.
As, and through a special permit process, so if it's a, it's slow QSR, you know, whatever, I can't even come up with a concept. The commission would have the opportunity to say, you know what, you guys are pushing the parking limits a little, so.
And some of, some of these applications were approved under shared parking as well, so, for example, Roost.
I was gonna go, because, because Sono Bakery, Sono Bakery and, and all those.
Well, Sono didn't have any, go to Roost.
Right, but.
But Roost's private parking, Sono's public parking.
Right, but the commission made, made a finding that the, the parking, the combined parking between nineteen fifty and nineteen fifty-eight was sufficient to serve the needs of all the. The, the, the residential apartments as well as.
The retail establishments and the.
The retail personal service establishments on the first floor, exactly, so. That standard wouldn't necessarily apply in that case, the commission would need to. We're not necessarily saying Roost would need to come back before the commission, but.
We want them to at least okay with staff to make sure that it would fit.
Well, that, that would be a question, it's a good question, which has been pointed out. For tables and chairs, do they just keep putting more and more in, or does it need some kind of?
I think it, in, in my mind, and guys correct me if I'm wrong, it needs staff approval. For an existing restaurant now that are going to the new standards, new, new standards, should come to the staff and ensure that there's enough parking for the number of seats, is that, is that? I don't think we need to see them again, us as a commission, but I think we, the expertise of the staff can say, listen, you want to put a hundred tables in, you don't have the parking for that. An extra three, sure, that's, that's, and I'm embellishing, but you know.
More than that, I wonder if it's a square footage issue as opposed to a parking issue even, because you don't want.
Well, again, you have fires.
Manhattan style.
Right, we should.
But that's not.
You can't even like, in case of a fire, you can't get out because their chairs are fucked up.
Yeah, but it's so crowded, nobody goes right there.
Yeah.
So is that, is that okay?
Yeah.
That staff would okay, hey, so in order to add tables, these existing businesses would have to go to staff and say, okay, based on the new standards that you just, if we adopt them, assuming we adopt them. We'd like to add X number of tables.
Right.
Staff approval would be necessary.
Yeah, we, I mean, I don't, I don't, there's more than, you can, you can't, if you said Roost today, put in more tables.
Right, but if you think of.
But on Sono Bakery, it's tight as hell.
Right, uh, think of.
But Sono Bakery also has municipal parking, Roost is not.
Vivalas, right, Vivalas, doesn't have, could they jam one or two more tables in? Probably.
They could, and when there's three there now, they can put tables on the outside, that's where, that's where.
There's really no room for the outside though.
Well, they do have people outside.
Yeah, outside, they have to come to the commission for a site plan.
Exactly.
Did, did, Alco's Deli come to, to them?
Well, I think that's a longer story.
Not Alco's Deli.
Yeah, let's not get into that.
Super Bowl.
Super Bowl did come to the commission, yes, they did.
All right.
Uh, the next one is expanded uses allowed in the newly merged office zone. You may recall last time we talked about merging the various office zones. We've got a memo from Frank Flaherty about adding things such as schools, daycare.
Adult care.
Adult care. And that is not in, uh, well, you can see, Glenn's booklet, he put in, uh, on page forty-nine, he had the educational uses, he did not, and he had assisted living, he did not include the adult daycare.
We want that in there definitely.
Okay.
That was she announced.
Uh huh, okay.
It's senior daycare, I'm sure you're not adult.
Issue of. Senior daycare. One thing Glenn talked about, which is on the blue sheet, but not on, uh, he talks about, and I'm jumping back and forth here. In the definitions, he talked about hotel motel or inn. He said, well, that could be considered to be kind of synonyms, they're kind of the same thing. My inclination is to keep it the way he's drawing it up, it sounds repetitive, but if someone were to open, uh.
Yep.
An inn, you don't want, oh, that's clearly not a hotel. So I think by having all three considered as one, I think the commission is very clear.
Note, I actually don't, I, I think it, it might be wise to not permit hotel motels that are in the town's area.
Well, that, that's a question.
Okay, well, well, wait, there are two issues, and I, I hear you, so where it exists already. Your proposal is to remove any reference to hotel motel, and there was one question about adding it to a office park.
Especially considering now we're merging the SB zones, so the SB is getting a lot bigger, and so the zones that would have, that will now permit hotel motel in with this amendment. Correct, Jeremy and Fred?
Uh, yes, the, the question is, I think in this book, we talked about adding it to the office zones, so if you think of Parklands or Four and Old Circle.
Yeah, so now you can have a hotel, you know, you could only, I think, have it in the SB zones that we know, like where Howard Johnsons used to be years ago. And now if we're moving, it's SB is gonna be here, and here, and here, and here.
Hold on, so let's confirm a couple things, so where, where is it allowed now by the special permit?
It is allowed now by special permit in the service business zone if you have five acres.
East or just service business?
Just service business.
The service business.
Okay.
So the question is, does the commission wish to keep the five acre minimum?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And this set of regs will also then allow it in the office zone.
And in the SBE zone.
Right, and then because SBE is covered, so it would be.
Okay, we just being a little bit.
Correct, so we're gonna have a lot more, so that would be allowed to build hotels on, and that is not what I envisioned for the plan of the area.
I get, I get, I get. Okay, so.
So first question, is the five acre limit?
First question is. Well, on the existing, sure, but then we, we quickly get into Liz's concern. You would, if, if Liz said magic one, I don't mean to speak for you, you would eliminate any reference to hotel motel inn, right?
Correct, and I would actually argue in front of all of you five, that, that we should eliminate hotel motels and inns from the town of Darien as planning and zoning.
Right, okay, so.
Because we have commercial, commercially viable hotels and inns and motels in Stamford and Norwalk, which is our east and west borders, and that there's no commercial need for it. Obviously, this can always change in the future, but I think at this point, um.
You want to eliminate it from our, so, anybody, anybody have thoughts on that?
I don't.
Okay, you know?
Eighty old King's Highway is a good spot for something like that.
Yeah, the question, the tennis, right? Jim?
Other than, there's, there's two needs, I think. Potential needs for a hotel or whatever the broader definition.
Bed and breakfast.
One is, you know, weddings, family coming into town, which is not enough to build a business on. And two is large corporate offices, where you have visitors coming in and out, which we don't have. So I, I guess I'm, I'm attracted by Liz's argument that we don't need them, I think she's right, we don't need them.
Okay.
And I think that if there is need for this, we have the DoubleTree that is literally right over the border.
So, Pliny Sherman and a new Canaan is lovely, and it absolutely is an establishment that I think adds to the town. So I think if something like that happened, that like in the space that you guys talked about, I think it could be lovely, and I think Roger Sherman's occupancy is pretty good from the last time I was there for a reunion.
Which is true.
And it did just trade, and they renovated it, and it's, I mean, my dad lives in LA, so those options you're talking about are horrific for him, I'm just saying. As someone who, those are our options, it's not a lovely place, it's not like Brenish Sherman.
You're right, if you want luxury, you have to go to Brenish, right.
Or Canaan.
Or Canaan. If my mother comes in town for Thanksgiving, I'd rather have her stay in Darien than in DoubleTree.
Definitely.
I hear you.
Stayed in your extra bedroom.
But I still.
All right, so against, I, I would not eliminate hotels, motels, and.
I mean, I guess they're takeaway hotels.
Kevin, you're now the swing vote.
So like a motel or inn. Then we have to define it.
No pressure, Kevin.
I think you can.
Guys?
I, I vote to eliminate.
All right, so it's eliminated.
So it's only in now.
Yeah, you're gonna eliminate all references.
Elimination.
All right.
Okay, let's keep, uh, moving in terms of, let's take it next through, ah, yes, we talked about drive-throughs. What zone should they be allowed? Last time we talked about drive-through restaurants, and the commission's, if I recall, the inclination was, drive-through restaurants would be good, maybe in the service business zone.
Yep.
And that might be about it, I think, uh, drive-through restaurants, you talked about downtown, the commission was no, not really. And neighborhood business, uh, no, so with service business.
Yep.
Drive-through banks or other types of drive-throughs was in downtown, the commission said by special permit.
And remember, that was not on the Post Road, that was, you know, there's areas that we're not thinking of where it could fit, nicely be complementary, yeah.
We talked about New York Heights by special permit.
Yeah, yeah.
We talked about the DC zone, which would be Goodwives by special permit.
Yep.
But you are there, right, you're just, you're there.
Senator has to kind of follow that.
Right, uh.
So where would it be permitted without a special permit?
Oh, probably.
Wouldn't be, okay, good, that's a, because you, because again, it's always when we merge these zones, you know, looking at this handy-dandy front, right? So all of a sudden, SB is, you know, where the, um, Heights, so the guys who just presented it, so do you want a drive-through restaurant there, no, you know, so special permit.
Right, but, but TD Bank, which would also be in the same zone, yeah, that'd be perfectly fine.
And those zones aren't gonna be the same zones, but they're very different, as you know, from neighbor planes and.
Correct. Let's talk quickly about the neighborhood business zone, because there are a couple neighborhood business zones, as we talked, one is right on the Five Mile River border. The other one is, I'll call it Naroten, where John McCarroll's buildings are, Mama Carmella's, that's the neighborhood business zone. We had talked previously this evening about what's now allowed in the neighborhood business zone is, we, we have never allowed offices, and we have never allowed restaurants. So what Glenn has done on page forty-five of the booklet is said, uh, he did not allow offices, but he did specifically allow restaurants. So what he said on page forty-five in the big bold sidebar, does the commission want to allow restaurants and other food service uses? Does the commission want to allow offices, business, professional, medical, dental? So that is, there's, as I said, there's a third area, which is corner of Naroten and Maple Street, which is the florist.
Hairdresser.
Hairdresser, yes. So that's the third N B zone.
Let's point out that there is a restaurant that's grandfathered into the N B zone, which is Papa Joe's.
Papa Joe's, Mama Carmella's are both grandfathered in.
Right.
They've been there a long, long time. Roost is now in that zone.
Right.
So that would be a quick service.
And you have that, uh, quick-service restaurant down in Tokine too, so.
Yeah, Jennifer's Kitchen. So that becomes, geez. Used to be where Lobster Craft. Corner of Raymond.
Right next to the liquor store.
Right next to the gas station we were talking about.
Across the street, um, okay, so.
I'm not sure you should have offices.
Yeah, I, I would do offices, again, all by special permit, right? And, and restaurants. Everybody, uh.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Someone wants to have an architect, someone wants to have a.
Yes.
Okay, so offices, uh, the only concern, I, and we've debated it back and forth, back and forth for weeks here now, is there are a lot of restaurants in those zones now. And certainly, not every space will be perfect for an office use or a restaurant use. The nice thing is, an office use might be quiet in the evening, so.
Yeah, I, again, they're gonna have to meet parking regs too.
Prove it to the question, yeah, office and restaurants all by special permit, okay? Let's see, next will be DC zone, the two DC zones which would be left would be Leroy West, which is the Coons Parking Lot, and Goodwives Shopping Center. And we have talked about the fact that we think about Goodwives Shopping Center, personal service uses, hair salon, nail salon, limber have been special permit uses. The commission has said for a while, geez, there's so much parking, make them as a right.
Please.
So the second issue is office uses, it's a little trickier, because Goodwives Shopping Center, right now, it would be very odd to put a mortgage broker or an architect's office in Goodwives Shopping Center, it would be a little weird. But we have to think long-term as well, is if the landlord there comes in with a whole redevelopment, it may be appropriate to rezone the entire property.
So why don't we do that as a special permit, right? Or you're saying no office, rezone the whole thing, or?
I would say for the time being, allow personal service as a right and no office, that would be my suggestion.
As a right, yeah. And there's no offices, there's no offices allowed right now?
Correct.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No office, personal service as a right.
Yes, agree.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, renaming the Naroten Heights redevelopment zone, that was easy.
Yeah, yeah.
What's that one good name, what's that one gonna be called?
I think we're gonna call it the Naroten Heights Zone. Uh, let's see.
It's not an oval.
Hotels, it's the parking requirement for outdoors, we covered that, let's. Let's cover quickly the municipal use overlay zone to certain properties. Glenn put in a, uh, map. And I think the inclination of the commission was, take as many town and school properties and change them.
I I gotta correct you, they're all town properties.
That's correct. Care, custody and control.
That drive, they are all town property, I, I'm, you know that, I just.
So we'll put them all on the table that way.
Yeah, the only one, the only one I'd like to maybe give a little extra thought to is Highland Farm.
Leave that out.
Why? Because the other ones are all educational?
Well, because Highland Farm's also supposed to be buildable, maybe, right?
Deed restriction and like, I just, they've been, we've gone through this, this, we we just went through the public hearing, I just leave it as a residential right now, and let somebody change it down the road.
Okay, yes, I agree, I agree with that.
I just feel like there's been enough there right now, so take that out if you could.
What, um, what's Baker Field?
That's a park. Parks don't change to municipal use zones, correct?
Not parks.
Not parks.
Well, Baker Field was a school.
It is now, and you will check, any dedicated parklands will not be included in the municipal use zone.
Correct.
Cuz dedicated parklands cannot be built on unless you swap land and we don't. Okay, so.
Or they can be built on, but we, I don't think the commission wants them to be built on to the extent that a municipal use zone would allow them.
Yeah, so, and one question is this property, cuz I know there's been questions, so can you clarify whether or not either the front or the back are dedicated parklands? If they are, carve them out.
Yep.
So easy. Pauline Field and then the town called Fields, there's, I, I don't know if you know the answer right now.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I know there's some, so that'd be helpful.
The last item is what Fred handed out earlier on the eleven by seventeen, which is Steve's suggestion, which is a good one. Many zoning regulations have a chart of the back, or zoning regulations, which talk about different types of uses and what zones are allowed, which is right there. So Fred has done, done a quick mock-up of, say, residential, and, uh, thank you, and then, uh, commercial will will continue to work on that.
I think it's great.
But we have to wait till.
The only thing I've seen, it's two separate charts.
One for residential, one for.
No, one for bulk uses, one for permitted uses. So you cut the chart this way.
And make it two.
Two charts.
So it's, this would be appendix E, and that would be appendix B, and this would be appendix.
I nominate Steve for the subcommittee to work with Jeremy and Fred and figure out the bulk charts. All in favor, thank you. Steve, it's a one-man subcommittee, you're on top of it. All good, now I'm joking aside, this is awesome.
Okay, this is great.
Alright, are we done with that, one more?
I think we're okay, since Glenn convinced me that it's March nineteenth.
Is that a Wednesday?
That is a Tuesday, the commission is not scheduled to meet.
Let's.
Can everyone make it if on March nineteen?
As in now, there.
Oh, okay, I'm.
Oh, I'm back, I am back, okay, yeah, I'm here.
Jim?
Uh, I'm looking at it, check on it, check on it, check on it. March nineteenth. It's fruelling's on. Beginning of spring, the first day of spring.
Are you guys good to nineteen so far?
March nineteenth.
March, um.
Yeah.
Yes, I am here.
Go, just answer it, sorry.
Um, yes, I'm good, I'm sorry.
Great, so we'll pull it together on March nineteen.
Great.
Anyway, uh.
Should we deliberate on the last two?
Yeah, that'd be great. Uh, deliberation, possible decisions regarding the following, if public hearings are closed, a special permit application number three oh four, Jeffrey Overman, six seventy-six Hall Street Road. Um, so this is, you guys wrote a memo, thank you, that is, uh, we typically don't write drafts for resolutions before public hearing to close, but this one was kinda headed in the directions for public hearing closure based on a couple items which they delivered this evening, so.
So we'll have to modify condition A to reflect, reflect the revised plans.
Yeah, so why, we're gonna have to keep this, I don't wanna vote on it until you modify it, we can take it quick.
Okay, we'll sit on this.
Yeah.
Without some two minute? It's up to us.
Bless you.
We should just note that the applicant has expressed a desire to install the ice rink this season, but if the, if the commission is. Hold on, I'm sorry, is Wednesday, October?
March nineteen.
It potentially could be March fifth.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we.
I thought it was March nineteen.
Yeah, we'll cancel next week, we're not scheduled to meet, school vacation week, the twenty-sixth will cancel as well.
Okay.
If you can all make it March fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Ovani has pointed out, it would be a long, long meeting, okay, so what revisions are you?
So there's a couple revisions to this draft resolution.
So let's go through them.
The paragraph two, where it says the two proposed chiller units will be placed, take out in the southwest part of the property, and replace that where adjacent to the house.
And shall be located there on a seasonal basis, right, cuz they're gonna remove.
They're permanent.
Oh, they're. They, they.
Hold on, Fred.
Hold on. They actually told us today or this week that the plan is to remove the chiller units on a seasonal basis, yes. So.
The guy, last week, the guy said it had wheels on them, and I said, well, then you must be able to move.
So they put them close to the house.
Okay, but they make sure seasonal basis, okay?
That wouldn't require them to move.
So paragraph three, the last sentence, will we move that?
On page two.
That means you require them to get moved.
Yeah, we're, we're not staying one way or the other.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to do what the applicant wanted to do.
Did the applicant said that when, not publicly?
I think.
Publicly, he said, two weeks ago, they're saying they're.
Listen what Fred just said. Yeah, I, I, I don't, you're right, I don't know that, that they publicly mentioned that the plan was to remove them on a seasonal basis. The information that was provided to us was that they had conversations with the neighbor to the west, and that was the impetus for moving the units from what was going to be on, or closer to the property line to the house itself. He indicated that the property owner had expressed a desire to have them removed on a seasonal basis, and that's why they were going in that direction.
So do we really care? They're, they're not gonna make any noise in the summertime, they're not gonna be used, they're not gonna.
There you go, okay, perfect, we don't care.
Close to his house, so.
Perfect, thank you, Jim, thank you.
So that's a change to paragraph two, change to paragraph three, change to condition A, reflect the plans submitted.
Which is just dates.
Uh, yeah, there was that new plan that was submitted tonight, they left it by seventeen.
Plus, we got two plans, sorry.
Steve's mentioned earlier of the ASBIL, that's reflected in G two at the top of page four. Final ASBIL, that the link in chiller units have been properly completed, and that is just before using the ring for the first time, okay?
We can certainly circulate this to the commission again tomorrow, or. Tomorrow morning, that'd be great, and we'll just take a look, editorial. A final look at it, and if there's any additional comments, you know, you can let, you know, you'll let us know. If there's any error in your understanding of what we're about to vote on, that is the way I would like to put it, we're not gonna change it.
Change material.
Right, yes, alright.
I can't think of any other changes from what we heard tonight that should be included in this, other than if you wanted to refer to Darren's memo or anything like that, or drainage.
Oh, well, Darren's memo's gonna be in the file anyway, so it doesn't matter.
So paragraph four deals with drainage.
That's all the scene.
And nothing's really changed.
Okay, so can I get a motion to, uh, adopt this resolution with the changes that we just discussed?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Alright, great, thank you. And then last is the special permit application number three oh five, set plan number one sixty-eight West Avenue, LLC one sixty-eight West Avenue. I think it's a glorious use within the S B zone.
I feel like we need to put in there that the previous application was withdrawn by the applicant.
We can do a finding between one and two, previous application withdrawn.
Does it say anything, any place in here that there's already two apartments on the second floor?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, paragraph one.
Third, third sentence.
On this, on this survey, on this survey, there's sixteen parking spaces, but two of them don't necessarily count.
So we have.
They're not, they're not numbered, but one kid that you've dumped in, and one blocks the, blocks the door, the rear door.
We can certainly mention that in paragraph two, it say fourteen parking spaces have been provided by the applicant. One space will be used for a dumpster to be placed on site. Screen dumpster.
Screen. Cuz this, the survey does not count that, does it?
No.
We're tech, we're splitting hairs, but the survey, the applicant didn't find spit, the survey. Spit?
No.
Yeah, but there's. I mean, I would count fifteen parking spaces.
How many do they need, twelve?
Ten.
Alright, so we're good.
We're coming back to, that's, we're good, but you're using one for the door, and using one or two for the dumpster, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, alright.
But there's not sixteen spaces left.
So change that to say fourteen.
Any others?
I can't think of anything else that.
Alright, so with those changes.
Those until approved and amended.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Brilliant. Okay, so you, you kind of jumped the gun, there was a calendar of project status. Updates, but did you review that?
Jeremy, the next meeting is March fifth, and why are we asking about the nineteenth, just?
Well, cuz that's an added meeting, we, originally we were supposed to meet on March fifth, March twelfth, and twenty-sixth. So instead of meeting next week, we'll meet March nineteenth, so probably the fourth time.
So we want to be fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth?
We'll see what comes in.
Just for now, fifth, twelfth, nineteenth. Just for now, fifth, nineteenth.
It'll probably be, it'll probably be L four, to be honest with you.
Oh, wow, okay, so you, you.
I'm gonna put it in on the twelfth then, and I'm not gonna put it in.
Will you send us an email tomorrow, so when I, when I get back to the office, I can put it in line?
Oh, I'm not here the fifth.
Not here the fifth, okay?
Sorry, I'm.
It's okay.
I'm here, you're here.
March fifth, we'll be dealing with, there's some town projects coming through, so March fifth will be some public hearings. We'll do the Diller referral, I think on March fifth. And then, uh, maybe, March twelfth is maybe, March nineteenth is a full night of the regs, and March twenty-sixth is a full public hearing night.
Okay, and just to be clear with Glenn, it's the final time we're gonna discuss outside of a public hearing, and we're gonna set public hearing dates.
Well, that's the question, do you want March nineteenth to be the hearing?
Uh, I really wanted to separate the MU stuff from the.
No, there'll be four agenda items.
Okay.
One is gonna be the MU.
Okay.
One is gonna be the appendix, about the old area chart.
Okay.
There'll be.
There's not further than the, than the.
The other will be the map changes we just went through for those various properties, and the fourth application will be the regs.
Okay, so these are, these are the four, perfect, and they're all getting noticed.
Standalone, yeah.
Perfect, awesome, that's perfect.
So that may, if someone doesn't like the MU zone, that may, that hearing might be continued or whatever.
Okay, we have a lot of likability, perfect.
Doesn't impact the others.
Excellent, thank you. And what happens with these notices, just for these general reg changes?
Well, the way it works, the regs specifically say, if you're rezoning an area of five acres or more, you don't have to notify. If you're doing just a small one-offs, you'll have to notify. So on these, on those little maps.
You have to notify everybody around the, okay, oh, good.
You have to, you have to notify the neighbors.
Yeah, which is good, we'll notify the property owner, and we'll notify the neighbors, and whatever happens, happens.
Okay, and then the MU zones?
The MU zones.
I'm just thinking, that's a long list of.
A lot of properties, it is a lot of changes, we're, we're gonna have to figure out what we do about it.
Okay.
So we've certainly get a legal notice, the paper two times, we may try to get a press release out, and get the word out to people. But it will be four separate.
Website, all that good stuff, okay, so I'll help you with the publication, okay, not publication, public, publicizing. Publicizing, that's where.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, any project status update?
Project status.
I guess the one thing that came up at OPC were two distinct requests to get updates on Federal and Palmer's, so perhaps by my next OPC meeting, you guys.
I need to email you what, Joanne Hennessy of P Z and H asked me for an update last week.
Oh, perfect.
So I will forward you tomorrow what I gave to Joanne.
Okay, and if I need embellishment, I'll ask you, perfect.
But basically, I reached out to all three parties in mid-January and said, where are you, what do you expect?
Town, where are we on town?
The three, the three parties being Palmer's, Fallow, and Building Good.
People ask me a lot, I don't know what to say.
Uh, we'll get that out to everybody, um, so the, all the building department approvals and fire, uh, commission, not commission, fire.
Fire marshal.
Marshal, they're all, all those boxes are checked, um, are they on?
For those projects?
Yeah.
Well, they're working on construction plans.
Okay.
So all the details, what's taking a lot of time now is parklands. Parklands, you know, that you've all seen, building looks pretty much done, but now they're doing a lot of indoor work. I just met with, uh, builder, uh, and they're tweaking some things out in the field, doing a lot of internal.
Okay.
They're hoping to open in March.
Which, which one are you talking about?
With the assisted living facility at Parklands.
That's not open yet?
What about, uh, all town homes? They already got construction materials on site.
They hope to start, they've started working on a demo permit, so I expect you to see demo.
You have to see the demo permit, okay.
Uh, I think they've applied, so you'll see that building come down within the next month or two. Everyone is along on it.
Okay, uh, so I think that's it, no other business, so can I get a motion, Jeremy?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.